We take roll now? Okay, we'll do it after.
I move that the board convene in closed session in room 337 pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, Part 1, Part C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, in pursuit to Wisconsin statute 19.85, Part 1, Part F, concerning financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary considerations of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where Part 2, Part B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely
Aye.
7-0.
to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in
Do we need to take roll call, Sandy? No, not for work session? Okay.
such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit Chief Financial
All right, so all seven Board members are present tonight. To my left is Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent.
Officer and Chief Human Resources positions, in pursuit to Wisconsin statute 19.85, Part
We have two Inter-City Student Council members, Jamie Barbian, who's our Inter-City Student
1, Part C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation
Council President from West High School, and Juliana Navarro from East High School.
data of any public superintendent's performance evaluation.
So, welcome, Juliana. And around the rest of the table are members of Dr. Langenfeld's cabinet.
The Board will convene an open session at 6:00 PM pursuant to section 19.85, Part 2, Wisconsin
At this point is a time for a public forum, and, oh, actually, before that, I'm just going
statute, to consider the balance of the work session agendas, which will include the open
to remind members of the public that you can view the Board agenda and handouts, as
forum and reports from staff. The Board may reconvene in closed session after the conclusion of the work sessions
well as minutes from past meetings, by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org.
for such reasons noted in this posting in pursuit into a proper motion.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Click on "Our District" at the top, and then "Board of Education" on the left.
Aye.
Warren? Aye.
Sittner?
On that left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes.
Aye.
McFoy?
Aye.
This link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all Board agendas, minutes,
Shelton?
Aye.
7-0, convene across the hall. and handouts from Board meetings are housed. Right. All right, Katie, entertain a motion to go back into open session. The Board will provide our community with two different opportunities during tonight's meeting to speak before the Board.
I move that the Board reconvene in open session pursuant to section 19.85, Part 2,
All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda, or any other matter you wish to share with the Board.
Wisconsin statutes, to consider the balance of the agenda.
Sandy?
McFoy?
Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting laws prohibit the Board from conducting business
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
on matters brought during this open forum.
Peckert?
Aye.
Maloney?
The Board also permits public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education
Aye.
Sittner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
will be voting on, as noted on the Board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, Board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the Board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. Please keep your comments to five minutes. The timekeeper will let you know when your five minutes has ended. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments, such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by Board members, are prohibited. I have no one that's filled out a form to speak before the Board, but is there anyone who would like to speak this evening before the Board? Seeing done, then we will move to our agenda. First is Teaching and Learning Work Session. That'll be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. Our first discussion item is the Head Start Self-Assessment. We've got Ann Barsh and Sally Jansen coming to the table. Sally's got a big smile on her face because she's early in the agenda.
A rare night.
That's right.
These are School Board members and Dr. Langenfeld. We do have the Head Start Self-Assessment. This is part of the compliance with the Head Start federal regulations, and it's a process that Sally and her staff go through every year to meet requirements. And so I'll let Sally do the talking.
Hello. Good evening. Like Ann said, it's required of us to conduct a self-assessment of the effectiveness of our program. Every year, we begin in December and end in January. We recruit community members, district staff, and all of our Head Start staff, including our parents and our Head Start Policy Council, in the self-assessment process. So we look at our progress in meeting program goals. We look at compliance in regulatory requirements. We review children's files, staff files. We review data from our educational assessment. We look at our family outcomes, the work that we're doing with parents, the work we're doing with children, and our involvement in our community. So I have submitted to you the summary of our findings. We've identified areas that we felt were strengths of our program, along with areas to strengthen, and then we created an improvement plan from that summary. Does anybody have any questions about the report?
Any questions or comments? Brenda?
I just wanted, I always enjoy reading this every year because it gives you a really quick snapshot of, you know, where your strengths are and things to work on, but so, kudos to your team, and I noticed you have a lot of people that worked on this process, so it looks like there's a lot of input.
It's a well-oiled machine.
Yes.
Thank you. Been doing it a long time.
Yes, you have.
But we find it very beneficial to the program. There's always, we're kind of replacing the federal government on these years when the federal government is not visiting us to do this review. We do it ourselves. And, you know, you think you've got everything just well-oiled, and there's always something that we find that we can improve on. So, it's a very good process.
Good. Thank you. As long as we have you. Ed?
Just a quick comment, too. I agree with what was said. I certainly, one of my favorite parts of being on the Board has been being in contact with Head Start. And just make a note of this. This past month, or actually in February, the founder of Head Start, Dr. Edward Ziegler out of Yale, had passed away. Some of us had the opportunity to meet him on one of our forays to Yale when we worked at the Howe Resource Center, and we had the Head Start come in there. But it was kind of a sad day for those of us who are close to Head Start.
Very much so. Yes. Our next discussion item is the Head Start 2019-20 Continuation Application.
Yes, we received a letter from the Office of Head Start to apply for another year of continuation programming for our Green Bay Head Start program. We did get an increase this year. We got a cost of living increase in the amount of $52,468, as well as an increase in our training and technical assistance dollars. And those are dollars that we put aside for training staff and parents. So the total is $3,052,476. So we're in process right now of writing the narrative and putting the budget together, and that is all due to the federal government April 1st.
Any questions or comments? Again, well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I'd just like to thank Ann and Sally as well for the tremendously fine work that they've done with Head Start. Their leadership in working with some of our youngest students is absolutely amazing. Thank you.
It's an amazing program.
Thank you so much.
It is.
Thanks, Sally. Thanks, Ann. Okay, we have the Advanced Placement Biology Resources.
And to that, we have Mike Fries and Alyssa Hoffman.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We are here tonight with a follow-up to when we had achieved approval from you earlier this year for the opportunity to run an Advanced Placement Biology course across our district. And so we now have gone through the selection, evaluation process for materials. And so the texts and resources associated with running this course across the district tonight, first up, Alyssa Hoffman, whose responsibilities do include secondary science curriculum coordination. To summarize, she'll be here to summarize for you these requests, based on the courses that you previously approved earlier this year.
So in October 2018, as Mike mentioned, the Board approved the conversion of Advanced Biology to Advanced Placement Biology, or AP Biology. That'll be beginning for the 2019-20 school year. At that time, we anticipated that one of the next steps in the process would involve us returning and selecting a textbook that is College Board-approved for the course. As a team, the teachers reviewed and evaluated potential resources from the list of Board-approved resources. The teachers provided feedback about both the print and the digital versions of the resources, and they considered a lot of factors. They looked at accuracy and completeness of information, accessibility features, interactive features, and then design and usability. The team has selected a book called Biology authored by Yuri Kane, Wasserman, Menorsky, and Reese. It is the most commonly-used textbook in AP classes nationwide, and it's also very commonly-used in many introductory college courses. The teachers preferred it because it's very complete in terms of content, it has very robust ancillary materials, and it's very user-friendly. We're also requesting additional lab equipment that will be used in the required AP Biology labs, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? I just have a quick question. The thermal cycler?
Yes.
Where we're ordering two to be shared?
Yes.
Among the four, is that going to be problematic? I mean, do people, are people hitting the same timeline?
It should be, it should be workable. We talked about it with the team, and we agreed that it's workable to share two. They won't be using it necessarily at the same time, and it's a very small portable device, so I'll just take it back and forth.
Okay. Brenda?
Do we have any idea of how many students are signed up for this right now?
Yep, we have 118 requests for next year.
And that's in general in the district, or is, just, do you know how it's broken up by school?
Yep. We have 40 requests at East, we have 61 at Preble, and we have 18 at Southwest.
18?
Yes.
That's a big difference. 40 at East?
40 at East, 61 at Preble, and then 18 at Southwest.
I'm just going to ask the question, it might be stupid. Anything at West?
West runs IB Biology.
So they don't do any AP at all for that?
Correct. They have IB Biology, and then students have the option, if they'd like to take the AP test, they certainly can. The curriculum lines up pretty well, actually.
So they'll be in on the thermal cycler?
Yes.
Rotation?
Yep, they're sharing it as well.
I don't know why that bothers me. You don't want to be under thermal cycler.
Did you not learn how to share?
I do know how to share. You know, when you want your thermal cycler, you want it.
That is very true, yes.
Follow that. So I'm just curious about the, you know, the numbers are quite different, so is there any reason that you might think that's the case, and why?
That, that's a, it's a good question. You know, and what Alyssa is speaking to refers to the types of requests that are in the system, not necessarily the number of students that end up actually in the course at the start of the year, because once you start putting together the puzzle pieces of a master schedule, things kind of shake out, and sometimes students have to eventually make a choice, like, okay, do you want, you know, we're offering this course third period, and, you know, it kind of runs up against something else you wanted. So, but rough numbers, that's what we're looking at. That does reflect, actually, an overall district increase in terms of the request for this type of content, having shifted from the Advanced Biology to Advanced Placement Biology. So when we look at the number of sections currently of Advanced Biology, this does reflect an increase, estimated somewhere in like...
Yeah, right now, we have 87 students taking Advanced Biology in the district, and we'll be at 119, so that's...
Yeah, so it's kind of reflecting, hopefully, a good trend of growth towards this accessible course, so.
And our, I just have one more thing, and then I'm done. And because we're obviously spending more money on this, right, and wouldn't hurt to have some, are we planning as a district to talk about this at all? In general, that we have this, we've kind of beefed up this program?
In terms of...
In terms, in terms of just, you know, we've invested in this, is there any discussion, or are we relating this to middle schools?
I think they're, looking at the broader system format, we are, of course, engaged in our turbocharge work, which is giving students greater access to dual credit, and AP is one way that students are getting credit towards some of their college experiences. I would also say, looking at Avid, and some of the work we're doing with Avid, and trying to get a greater number of diverse students into some of our AP courses, that's something that is a focus of the district, and will promote greater diversity into those classes. Thinking about Southwest as well, this is Avid's first year at Southwest with freshmen, so these, you know, second year would be when kids start looking at the AP Bio-type course. That may increase the numbers there, too, when we have more kids being encouraged to try some of the AP classes. Sometimes there's hesitancy or reluctance to want to give it a shot if they, if students are looking and not seeing a lot of students that might mirror themselves. So doing all we can to make sure that those students are given those opportunities is really important to us as a system.
Okay, I have one more.
Well, Michelle had her hand up. Go ahead. Go ahead.
As, as we were thinking and talking about Southwest, is there a course that not all the other schools have in terms of number, that really seems to attract a similar kind of student there is?
We offer two dual-credit courses at Southwest. There's Energy and Society, and Energy, yep.
Yes, that's the one.
Correct.
And that was a very popular course, if I recall correctly. So that may be, could that be one of the reasons?
They could be competing for students, yes.
Okay, that's what I wondered. Thank you.
Brenda? So just going back to trying to make sure that awareness is out there about the program and the investment that we're making, and thinking in terms of enrollment as well, because that's important to everyone sitting here. Is there any sort of conversation happening at DaVinci School at all?
Earlier this year, as Principal Van Dyke asked each high school to come forward and share a summary of what they focus on at their particular high school, I had the opportunity to provide an overview of, these are the types of capstone experiences that exist academically in our district. And so I was able to explain with specific titles which courses are eligible for dual credit and advanced placement. And so they were able to see all of those pieces of information around, you know, yes, what's available in our district, so.
And who did you explain that to?
Leonardo DaVinci had a parent night for families associated with eighth-grade students primarily, and then John gave an introduction, and so it was an opportunity to meet with the families, help them understand academically what options exist in our district at the different high schools, as well as as a district overall.
So can I just ask, though, so there were families who didn't attend that, is there any sort of communication going out to any of the families about this at DaVinci, aside from who was at the parent?
I provide, I'm sorry, specifically, Principal Van Dyke was provided, you know, all the information that was shared that night in a linkable, accessible form, so that she, I defer to her method of communication to share that with her family.
So she did?
I can check on that.
Yeah.
And then also the work that our counselors are doing with students as they're transitioning to high school, making sure that they're well-aware of all the options, and so that they're informing kids well. And many of this course, as well as the others that we're talking about tonight, are generally taken by students who are sophomores and above quite often. And so quite often, those conversations would be taking place as much or more once they get to high school, when they're in their freshman year, thinking about what they might be looking at at sophomore year. One important piece, though, is that we have added, and we're kind of a forerunner, not every district does this, but the, I'm spacing, the history course, the human...
Human Geography.
Human Geography, yes, sorry. The Human Geography course is something that is new for districts, relatively new for districts, and particularly here in Wisconsin, and we took on the Human Geography course here. And so that gives students an opportunity to try an AP course relatively early and see how they like it. And when we talk about accessibility, I think it's a pretty accessible course. It's not something that you have to be deeply math-minded or scientifically-minded. It's a good access point where somebody can get some comfort in an AP course, and then branch out into an AP Bio or something along those lines.
I still want to go back to, you brought up Avid. I was over at Edison, and I was learning about the work that they're doing. So can you speak a little bit, John, about where you are with the districts with analyzing and collecting that data from programs like Avid, to know that there is going to be an impact in the equity numbers of our students taking classes like this?
Well, I think that there is, looking at Edison, they're using Avid as not just an elective course, but they're using it as a systems change piece, looking at it as a school improvement opportunity to enhance instruction throughout the school, but then also focus on making those courses more accessible. In a previous role, I was an Avid District Director, and so I think here in our district, we're doing a really good job of enhancing what we're doing with Avid, and I think that there's more yet to come with some very exciting work that we're beginning to undertake.
So is that, so that there's no clear data at this point in terms of tracking that, or what does that mean in terms of data tracking?
There is. I don't, I don't have the data myself, and Michelle's signaling me over there. She may have the data, or Vicky may as well, because she works with Renee, but it's something that we could come back with.
Yeah, and I'm not expecting you to know it off the top of your head. I was just curious, like, how, you know, because I thought that that was really interesting, and you brought it up.
Thank you for showing an interest. Is there anything specific you want me to find out?
We can talk afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
I was just curious of you looking at the data, that's all.
Yeah. We like data.
What?
You like data.
I do. Don't we all?
Okay, I'm calling you, Michelle now. Go ahead, Michelle.
Because I just wanted to share, and I think I shared it at the last Board meeting, we have seen an uptick, an increase in AP district enrollment in the courses, and that was recognized by College Board. And as part of that, to be on that district honor roll, it talks about increasing, districts committed to increasing access to AP for underrepresented students while simultaneously maintaining and increase a percentage of students earning AP exam scores of three or higher. So that is the work we're trying to do. But, but Avid requires data collection as well, so all of that should be available.
Thank you, Michelle.
I think, too, keeping the materials fresh, like Mr. Fries is doing, along with Alyssa, making sure that the kids are working with really engaging materials, is another great way to increase our enrollment in those courses as well. So with the support of the Board, if we have support for these materials, I think it can take a very good class and make it even better.
All right. Any other? We'll move that forward. Thank you. And now, Advanced Placement Psychology and Advanced Placement Macroeconomics Resources.
And joining Mr. Fries will be Dr. Con.
Yes, tonight, Dr. Con will share with you a request for approval associated with Advanced Placement Psychology, as well as Advanced Placement Macroeconomics courses, and I'll turn it over to him, as he has the more interesting information than me.
Sure, we'll go with that. The current resources we're using for our AP Psychology and AP Macroeconomics courses were last adopted in 2007, and since that time, the College Board has updated both of the courses in 2014 and 2012, respectively. So over the past months, teams of teachers have investigated and evaluated the resources from the AP's example textbook lists. The books they reviewed included titles that were directly aligned to the AP course content, as well as books intended for the general higher-ed setting. The teams provided feedback regarding the course, the textbook content, the design and overall usability, the quality of activities and assessments. And then after review, they identified Meyer's Psychology for the AP course, and Krugman's Economics for the AP course. Both titles are based on a higher education textbook, but they were organized to more closely meet the organization of the College Board's AP courses. These resources were selected because of the presentation of the content, they were considered engaging as far as their layout and readability for high school students, and then also how the resources address the more challenging concepts in each course. Over the coming months, before the beginning of the next school year, we'll be providing professional learning for the teachers on the use of these resources, in particular the online platforms. And I'm happy to answer the questions that you have.
Any questions?
Brenda? Can you talk about the professional learning development in regards to this curriculum?
Sure. So outside of the actual course content, it's the use of the resources. So compared to when the books were originally adopted, the publisher has more robust, a more robust online presence, and so they are going to be providing some professional development as part of the adoption for the teachers in the use of the platforms.
Thanks.
Anything else? You have no other questions? We'll move that forward. Thank you.
Thank you both.
And that concludes the Teaching and Learning Work Session.
All right. Thank you, Katie. Next is Organizational Support Work Session. That'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
Okay. For discussion, discussion items under Business and Finance, we have none. Under Human Resources, we have none. For Discussion and Public Comment, under Business and Finance, we have none. And for Human Resources, we have four items. The first one is the Drug-Free Workplace Policy, 522.1. So any introductory comments with that? Any Board questions about this?
Yes, I did, but my mouse just died.
Anyone?
I did.
Brenda?
Okay. Can you just give kind of an overall summary on record for the public of why, I guess, how we're actually bringing this to be compliant? We're just, is that what we're doing, right? We're just making this compliant language?
Yeah, the, sorry. Well, federal law requires that schools have policies that prohibit drug and alcohol possession, use, et cetera, on school grounds. This policy also provides detailed definitions, which are extremely important, since these things are an ever-shifting reality in our society. So, and then, excuse me, and then spells out the prohibited conduct, which is, again, what is required by the Drug-Free Workplace and Drug-Free Schools Acts.
So it was not laid out in that manner?
Not in this, not in this level of detail.
Okay. So that's the difference.
Yeah, absolutely.
Brenda?
Question on 6C. Can you give an example of what would happen if someone violated that?
You're looking at notifications?
Notifications, C, yeah.
Okay. So this is, when it, in an employment context, where employees typically were governing or supervising conduct that occurs during the course of employment, schools and educators and being in the public eye and so forth have somewhat of a unique position in the sense that when off-duty conduct, particularly related to drugs and alcohol, impairs that person's ability to be effective in the classroom, for example. So there are instances where off-duty conduct that then becomes potentially publicized, for example, can become a disciplinary interest for the, for the school. So this is putting employees on notice that it's, it can be employed, so to speak, with respect to disciplinary or other conduct, even if it occurs off duty.
are extremely important, since these things are an ever-shifting reality in our society. So, and then, excuse me, and then spells out the prohibited conduct, which is again, what is required by the Drug-Free Workplace and Drug-Free Schools Acts.
So it was not laid out in that manner?
Not in this, not in this level of detail.
Okay. So that's the difference.
Yeah, absolutely.
Brenda?
Question on six C. Can you give an example of what would happen if someone violated that?
You're looking at notifications?
Notifications C, yeah.
So this is, when it, in an employment context where employees typically were governing or supervising conduct that occurs during the course of employment, schools and educators and being in the public eye and so forth have somewhat of a unique position in the sense that when off-duty conduct, particularly related to drugs and alcohol, impairs that person's ability to be effective in the classroom, for example. So there are instances where off-duty conduct that then becomes potentially publicized, for example, can become a disciplinary interest for the, for the school. So this is putting employees on notice that it's, it can be employed, so to speak, with respect to disciplinary or other conduct, even if it occurs off duty.
Okay, thank you.
Which is a pretty typical policy provision for schools in particular.
Other questions? I'm going to stay on six C. So an employee's off-duty conduct relating to alcohol or controlled substances has a legally sufficient connection to the individual's employment. Like, what would that even, I'm just going to, for simplicity, I'm just going to say alcohol, something that's legal for all adults over 21. What, what would that even look like that someone would, probably talking social media here, what would an alcohol thing even look like that we would claim the right to have it be an employment matter?
Well, this is all hypothetical. So, you know, let's say, for example, you had somebody who was arrested, charged, what have you, for providing alcohol to minors. And it was an employee whose position regularly had them interacting with, maybe a teacher or something, interacting with students. That might be one example where we would say that that type of conduct impairs that person's ability to be effective as an.
Yeah, I guess that's, that's a fair, that's a fair point. I thought of that one too. But to me, that's not about the alcohol. That's about a law relating to how adults can and cannot interact with minors, right? So the, there's any number of, so I'm just, what I'm worried about, and again, I don't, I don't bring these things up because I think the people at this table will do them. I'm doing it because I'm writing a policy that may last long after I'm not here anymore. You know, I'm thinking of people who legally drink a lot of alcohol and put it on Facebook and don't drive and don't give it to kids and they aren't with kids, and all of a sudden, they're, they're fired. And they, a policy like this is then cited. So I guess I don't like to put things in the rules that have a low bar for that, even though I recognize that our HR department would use a more reasonable standard, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, you have to, like you said, Andrew, it's a, it's a policy. So what we're, what you're stating in policy is that, that there could be situations where conduct related to, in this case, alcohol or controlled substance, even if off-duty, could become an issue with respect to employment. But a situation where somebody likes to drink alcohol and does so legally and doesn't get themselves in any legal trouble, that would be a highly fact-specific situation. You know, social media always complicates things. So, but I don't think there's anything per se sobriety or a teetotaler rule, so to speak. But, you know, it would be a highly fact-specific situation. This just gives you the authority to say, hey, sometimes there is a connection.
Yeah, but there's, there's ways that this could be written harder to do, I would think.
Well, what about the term legally sufficient connection?
That was my question.
I mean, is that, is that the crux of this, this particular item here?
Yeah, well, there is a state law, for example, that says that you can't take adverse employment action against somebody for the use or non-use of lawful products. So you could not have a policy that said, no district employee may consume alcohol, right? That is, that would be not legal in that sense. But then there's also a body of case law, you know, in the old days when we worked with, you know, collective bargaining agreements, for example, a body of case law in there, that talked about a nexus between the course of conduct and a person's position as a public educator, for example. And that connection, again, typically in a very generic sense goes back to, does this conduct and oftentimes the publicity potentially that surrounds it impair that person's ability to be effective in the classroom? And that's where that nexus is drawn, and that becomes a legally sufficient basis upon which to take adverse employment action against somebody, not simply because, you know, they had a drink, but because something else occurred that got to that point. Does that answer your question?
Well, somewhat. But again, it sounds like, again, you're saying if it goes beyond, I mean, there's, we're saying that the, you know, we're going over way to spell out in this policy that employees' off-duty conduct, if it has a legally sufficient connection, you know, we don't do that with everything. I mean, there's, there's, I would imagine there's probably things that could be, I'm trying to come up with an example that isn't like too ludicrous, but I would suppo, okay, I would suppose there would be conduct with a commercial paint sprayer that could be legally sufficiently connected to your, depending what you did with it on the side of a district building, but it's not about the paint sprayer. It would be then about vandalism or about, right? Or with the drinking, it's really about inappropriateness with minors or drinking and driving or endangering health and safety. So I guess I just, why this needs to be here, other than to be the catch-all for the things that aren't the higher bar, although I don't, I'm not extraordinarily worried about it because of the legally sufficient in there, but it's, you know, legally, I've seen things that have passed for legally sufficient in some places and cases that I wouldn't want to be treating our staff that way. Not here.
Sure. Well, I mean, again, number one, the details are always important in any particular situation where you apply a policy, correct? So there's the policy and then there's the application of it. And in each instance where there is an effort, say, to take adverse employment action, one of the critical pieces is, you know, our employees on notice that there could be situations where what you do in your private life can become something that affects your professional life. And that's, that's important for a policy like this, to put employees on notice of that fact. But there's enough protections, in my opinion, in here that you couldn't have somebody who decides, you know what, we just want to have nobody drinking alcohol, and say, our policy allows us to do that. That would be inaccurate, I would say. But this does allow us to say, if there is a connection, if there is that impairment, you're on notice that there could be an effect.
So what you're saying is, without this policy, it would be hard to say, this behavior, you can't, you can no longer work here because of this behavior. And this person could say, well, there was no policy that told me that that was wrong.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it is a, it is a barrier to effective action.
Right.
When there's a lack of notice. Now, you know, people can also say, well, there's certain things you don't have to be told, like you can't steal from your employer, for example. That's the classic one. You know, if a policy that says you can't steal, it doesn't mean you can't be treated adversely. So there's a limit to that, but it's always best to have notice, to put people on notice.
This essentially protects the district.
Yes.
Right.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move that forward. Thank you. Employee Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy 523.11. Introductory comments or questions?
Yeah, I can just briefly introduce this. This policy is, is really, sorry, moved that away from me again. Is really a codification or a writing down of the practice that already exists within the district. So relative to circumstances where employees either post-offer, pre-employment, or during the course of employment might be subject to drug testing. No, if that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions? Christina?
I apologize. I didn't submit this question prior to, so if you don't have the answer, that's fine. But do we have an idea of how much we spend year over year on drug testing, pre-employment?
I, I have no idea.
I'm just curious. Sorry, John.
And purveyor does it downstairs when the employee comes, don't they?
In the building.
Yeah, right here.
And do we, sorry, another question. Do we have a, maybe this isn't standards, or maybe this is a dumb question. Do we have a list of what we, what we screen for? How does that?
We would assume so.
Okay, yeah, great. Thank you. Okay, perfect. Thank you, John.
Yeah, there's certain panels that they.
Yeah, okay.
What's, what's the, what are the rights of the individual if they have, of the candidate, of an employment candidate? I guess I'm talking pre-employment right now, if they have a non-negative result.
What are their, what are their rights?
Yeah.
Well, they have the right to be informed that that is, in fact, the reason why their offer is rescinded. That's why it's post-offer, subject to successful completion of the, of the drug test. You can't do it pre-offer. You could, not, that would be prohibitively expensive to drug test all applicants, but you couldn't do that legally for exactly the reason that you just described.
So what if the testing place gets one wrong?
There, there are procedures to have a test, to have a sample retested. And that's why we have a third party, you know, you have purveyor, I guess, that does all of it. They have procedures for disputing results and retesting and so forth.
So the candidate does have a right to do that?
Subject to what, what the clinic provides, yeah.
Well, what if the clinic's the one who got it wrong? And I realize it's rare, but we are a big place with a lot of staff, right? So.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what exactly their procedures are. I can tell you, one of the things covered in this policy is, is DOT regulations that.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm not talking about, I know those are, that's a higher.
Sure.
That's a higher threshold, and I, and it should be a higher threshold for DOT and commercial driving, yes.
Jennifer can answer. Let's speak to this a little bit. If there is, when we have somebody go through drug tests, we do it here at our onsite clinic. If it is negative, we get the results right away. If there is anything that might deem it positive or possibly dilute sample or things like that, it goes on for further testing. And, and there's a protocol that it goes through before we get any results read to us. So that, that is, it stays in that pending status until, at this point, it's purveyor is able to complete, it goes through many more, many more checks.
Christina?
So I'm not from Wisconsin, but I've taught in many states around this country. And as a teacher, I was never drug tested. So is, how long have we, is this a historical expectation of, is this new? This has always been?
Yeah, I was tested 30 years ago.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious.
At least that long.
Okay.
Jamie?
I had said too much of this stuff in advance, so this might be an unformed question. But I was just wondering, with the growing popularity of drugs like CBD oil, that can have a positive THC reading, how is that being considered?
Good question, Jamie.
Yeah, I don't know if, I can speak a little bit to that, but some of it has to do with how the tests are set up, where there are, you have, for a test to render or to be positive, has to exceed a certain volume, mass, whatever.
There's, there's no THC in that?
There can be readings of that.
Yeah.
State of Wisconsin doesn't allow the sale of CBD oil if there's THC in it?
Well, I think it's worth, it's worth looking into. If there's a certain, right, I mean, poppy seeds are legal, but if you ate, it would have to be a rather crazy amount of them, but you could have to, I believe it's true that people had to explain, have been able to successfully explain.
Yeah, and it's not such a crazy amount.
It's me.
Oh, it's not even that crazy?
It's not that crazy a amount. It can.
So I think that's a, I think that's a relevant, I think that's a relevant thing to, to consider. And, and marijuana is, is legal in states that we are recruiting from for adults. So where does that, how does that fit into the mix?
Yeah, well, marijuana is technically not legal anywhere, because federal law trumps state law. And I'm not naive. I understand that a lot of states are dispensing it recreationally and otherwise, but it is still illegal to utilize the drug. And Wisconsin law did recently change, back to your CBD oil question, where some, because some of that stuff is still in testing product levels, trace amounts of THC is not considered to be possession of marijuana if it's, if it's in some varieties of the oils. But that would all be covered in the volume dilution if it's, there's, it has to hit a certain threshold to be considered positive.
But I think your point, though, is, is, should be considered, because especially the way that cannabis is, is stored in the body for longer periods of time, because it's a fat soluble substance. When you compare that to other non-fat soluble substances, we, people may be penalized, they are penalized for THC more than other drugs, because like in alcohol, you can consume alcohol and then within a reasonable amount of time, pass a drug test. So I do think it's important for us as a board to think about considering whether this is necessary, whether it's effective, and whether it's worthwhile. I'm not saying that I, I'm just, I think it is important to consider.
Just, just to be clear, I am not at all talking about me being in any way okay with someone under the influence of THC on the job. I'm talking about us recruiting someone who may be coming to Wisconsin if we're, outside the state's, state's rights arguments, but we also, I like to think we recruit internationally sometimes, and I think completely, completely legal in Canada, I think, or most provinces. So, you know, and we recruit, we try to recruit foreign wide. So I don't know, I don't know if I'm suggesting a.
A significant change.
Change right now, but I, I just wanted to get out there, because I think it is, I think it's a different situation now than it was 10 years ago. And that was a different situation than it was 30 years ago.
Agreed.
Katie?
Jennifer, what's the turnaround time, when they do have to do the more sophisticated test? What's the turnaround time on that?
It depends. It can take a few days. Part of that is a medical review officer reaches out to the person. So they'll have that conversation with them. Maybe somebody's on a narcotic for, for, after surgery, something like that. So they'll go through that.
Okay, so there's the opportunity for people to give personal history.
Right, absolutely. That's part of the process.
To try to explain, because that, that happened to me once at a paper mill, that an allergy medication actually showed up positive.
So, so there, they'll look at if it's the right levels within the body, if somebody's not abusing the, so they'll be able to clear those instances.
Okay, so it's not like we just, you know.
No, not at all.
But it does complicate it, though, right? Because if you, okay, we don't have to get into the weeds. But if you live in a state where it's legal and you're taking it, it is prescribed by a doctor, you could be taking it for med, you know, for medication in a legal state, and then come here, and it could be in your system, even if you didn't take it when you were here. So it does really become quite complicated with the.
But that's where they, that's the interview process. Find out that you're on it, you have a prescription.
Well, but do they consider that in the interview, or do they say, no, it's illegal?
We'd have to defer that to the medical review officer. But, but THC, ultimately, it's, it's illegal in Wisconsin at this point. So, so there's that, that aspect of it.
But when you have, when you have some sort of documentation that you are being treated for X, Y, Z, and you would have that with you? If you, if you were concerned about that showing up?
Well, sure, but they may or may not count it. I mean, it, I'm not saying I agree with it, but someone could, I mean, a medical officer could argue. I don't care what the doctor and, and the state wrote, it's against federal law. We, I don't care that your state ignored that federal, I don't agree with it, I think, but...
Yeah, to that, the, the lines that say, I'm looking at 3A5 right now, and it says that individuals present non-negative test results, reviewed, so on and so forth, will have any offer of employment rescinded. Instead of will, should we say may have? I mean, if there may be some extenuating circumstances that, you know, after the, the test goes through and it comes back, yes, it's non-negative, but as it turns out, you know, I'm from Manitoba.
So you're saying if you put a may in there, that would give you...
Instead of will, I mean, will is hard and fast, that you have to, and then...
Yeah. Well, and...
Just a thought.
It's giving the, I don't want to put some medical review, I mean, I would want to give great weight to the medical review officer's opinion, but I don't want to put that in a binding way over the judgment of our HR department, probably.
Well, a couple of things. Number one, going back to your comments before, your discussion before, with respect to, you know, recruiting and so forth, and people from, maybe from states where this is legal or other countries. I would suggest that's one of the reasons why you want to have the policy then, so that the people are on notice, that this is right now something that we, that we require here in Green Bay, if you're coming from Saskatchewan or whatever. That's just a fun word to say. The other thing with respect to 3A5, I would suggest that you consult with the medical review officer to understand what their process is, because one of the, one of the reasons why you have a structure the way we do, where the certification comes from the MRO that says this person has failed the drug test, is so that the district is protected from making that decision directly. In other words, we can say, we incorporate, or we use a medical facility, a medical review officer process, and that person determines that this individual doesn't, doesn't meet our requirements. Once we get into case-by-case analysis, this drug is okay in this situation, that gets much more complicated, and you really would have to sit down with the MRO and purveyor and figure out what that panel looks like.
Well, sure, but we've had, I guess, I don't like, I don't like substituting an arbitrary policy for our, for our staff's judgment. It is, it does get a little sticky or messy or sometimes. But we also, we also once had a rule where if you had anything in your record, anything in your life about drugs, you could never volunteer at a school. And there was a situation that later led to some policy changes, where someone in their, someone who was, I believe, in her forties, had a municipal ticket for a paraphernalia in their twenties, and was permanently barred because the HR people at the time, prior to our current HR people, just would, it was just a lot easier than doing the work and making a decision. And again, that's people that were not in our HR department anymore. But, you know, I, that was really crummy, because there were, there were parents who couldn't volunteer in their kids' own schools because of a, something that wasn't even a misdemeanor, it was a municipal ticket that happened twenty, thirty years ago. And they were, you know, that wasn't cool. And I don't, I don't like the, no, I think there's plenty of times where there would be no grounds to, to give an exception, but this is getting, this, this is becoming a grayer area, and I want to, I want to recruit, I want to recruit good, good people. And we're, and, you know, there's just changes in what's legal where, and it's be, it's becoming more, more decentralized. I think the fact that we have, you know, I think the fact that we have a, you know, directly neighboring state that is now, we have, someone could be coming from as little as sixty miles away who could be as an adult legally use THC. I, I don't know if I want to tell them, you're not welcome here. I do want to tell them, you're not welcome to use marijuana or drink on the job, and you never will be regardless of legality, obviously. That's different, so...
So in a perfect world, what would you do with this?
I, I think maybe I like the... I think I, I maybe like the HR making the final decision with the may, I think.
And that takes care of it for you?
I, I don't know, I don't have a better idea right...
Right now.
Now.
But adding in may creates more of a...
I, I think it gives our staff discretion.
I agree with you, sorry, Brenda.
Brenda?
Since it's such a minor change in the policy, I'm wondering, we have Jean and Melissa both not here today. We could just bring this back next week? They're both going to be back, I assume, yeah? Can we just bring it back?
Yeah, no problem.
Because I'd like to hear if there's any unintended consequences to changing the language.
The, the big thing is, it's illegal in Wisconsin at this point. So to ask HR to override on something that is illegal is going to be very difficult to do.
Yeah, I mean, writing these policies typically, if we want to change things that we deem to be exclusions, we work with the test, so that ultimately, when we get a non-negative test, it already takes into consideration these other things. And you protect the district, because the decision is, is based on the test results and the process that is entailed within that testing regime.
Well, I'm sure, sorry.
Is it Ed and then...
Yeah, I might be missing something here, but at the top, it, you know, it does say employee alcohol and drug testing. And then, I'm going back to Roman numeral number three, and A, and it's very specific there, and in A1, speaking to student teachers, interns, or practicum students, and contractor testing. It doesn't say anything about teachers, it doesn't say anything about administrators. I mean, it's very specific to a finite group of people there, so is that an error? I mean, is this supposed to address all employees? Because as I'm seeing it here, it's just talking about student teachers, interns, practicum placements, and contract employees.
But it says all individuals who are issued a contingent offer of employment.
Designated to be placed by an institution for a student teaching internship or practical placement.
Or contractor.
Or contractor, or such.
I see that as a list. There's a comma after employment, and then we're not offering, offers of employment to student teachers.
Well, look at A, look at what A says, pre-employment, pre-placement of student teachers, interns, or practicum students, and contractor testing.
I see, the title is, yeah.
Well, and it's interesting, because I feel like the contractor testing on the header, it makes it seem like if you were a contract, you were hired as a contractor, but then on two, it seems like the assumption is teachers are contracted. Is that the, is that the flip?
It looks, it looks to, I could see, I could see a teacher making a case that these categories in the title and in paragraph one don't apply to the position I applied for. Or an administrator, I think, student teaching, I, I think that, I think that should be probably, probably clarified.
Yeah, I agree.
Go back to your may, the word may.
Yeah.
So are you saying that if you actually insert the word, the word may instead of will, that it, I mean, may is still a, it's not a certainty, right? So they could, even though, like, your point, to your point, it's illegal, you could still...
Yeah, it sounds like...
...pay a deployment, or you could, you have more options with may than you do with will.
Like, okay, I can, I don't know, I don't know exactly where I'm at with a, a test of a, but I, I can tell you something. If someone, if some, someone from a state that had medical marijuana came, came to the district and they tested positive for THC, they said, I'm not using it, and I'm not intending to use it in Wisconsin, where you don't have medical marijuana, but this is my medical marijuana card from the state in which I was prescribed it by a doctor. Yes, I would expect that test result to be overridden by us. At least in the doctor-prescribed case, I would.
But doesn't that word may actually accomplish that?
It would, it could allow that, but right now it would be forbidden. Brenda?
I mean, purveyor has a process for this. This is not the first time they've been around the block with drug testing. And I'm, I'm thinking that, that they have a contingency plan for...
There's a provision for them to declare that it has...
Almost, almost everything we've talked about that they've faced before.
Do they, do they...
They're not in the business to deny people employment. They're in the business to get to the bottom of whether this is an illegal use of a drug or not. And if somebody has documentation that they use medical marijuana in another state, that's part of purveyor's process.
So you're saying that purveyor would, you're saying it could be part of the process where they would give their medical marijuana card and purveyor would...
Well, there's a medical officer that calls somebody. So they're trying to get to the bottom of this. Is this real, or is this a false positive? Is this, is there something else going on? They have an interview with the, with the person, and they've, and this person has a chance to say, I'm on this medication, I have a prescription, you know, I have prescriptions for these. I, you know, have an, in Katie's case, it was a, you know, an allergy medication. I mean, I don't think the purveyor is out to deny people being hired. They're out to get to the bottom of whether this is somebody that, that is, you know, that is hirable, because they're not using, they're, you know, and if they have a positive, they get to the bottom of whether that's real or not. And that's why we hire them to do our work, so that we aren't faced with making a medical decision in HR as to whether somebody's drug test was positive or not.
But I would think, I would think if we, I would think we would, I would be concerned if we don't know whether medical marijuana is an exemption.
Okay, but doesn't the word may actually keep us from committing to, I mean, they're going to do what they need to do, but when we're talking about policy, can we just talk about the word may, so we can decide one way or the other?
I thought, we're, we're going to wait till next week.
We're not, so we're not, but what are we sending forward?
Well, Jean isn't here, Melissa isn't here, I think we're going to finalize that next week.
And that's fine, but, so we're not even going to decide if we're sending, what we're sending to her?
We're going to have them look at it.
We can make that change.
I think they'll take that be written anyway.
It's just a quick little word, so it's not like we're asking her to write a whole new section.
Right.
Yeah, so I think we can do that next week without, without making any decisions today. We can find out what the, I mean, because it sounds like there's a protection issue for us. There's a, you know, what does purveyor do, or don't, does, what does purveyor do or not?
3A and 3A1 have to be clarified. So we do or we don't know how they handle the, a medical marijuana from another state.
We'll, we'll get that clarified for you.
Yeah.
All right. All right, other questions? Okay, move that forward, and have additional discussion next week. Accessibility of technology-based resources policy. Opening comments, or? No? Okay, board, board questions?
Is this, again, codifying what we've already been doing? Or are there things in here that are new to our practices? Does anybody know, or?
I don't know exactly what your practices are, but accessibility for technology resources has been an issue from the Department of Ed, Office of Civil Rights, and so forth. And so this policy is intended to articulate efforts to assure that those resources are accessible, both to the public, but also in terms of educational, access to educational resources. And the Department of, US Department of Ed requires that there be a complaint and a complaint resolution process, which is also incorporated as well.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we'll move that forward. And then, the last discussion and public comment item is benefit renewals.
All right, so next week, we'll be bringing forward motions for the, regarding our plan elections, recommendations for the 2019-20 benefit plan year, which goes into effect July 1st of 2019. So, as we indicated in the memo, with advocacy from the Green Bay Education Association, we did look at some more plan options. And with those additional options, we're bringing forward a revised recommendation. The new recommendation keeps in place the $500 single, $1,500 family deductible. It keeps the 90-10 coinsurance in line. What it does change is the out-of-pocket maximums. They were originally set at $2,000, $4,000 for the recommendation. It would go to $1,350 for single and $2,700 for family. That aligns with the flexible spending accounts, the IRS regulations on what somebody can set aside in the flexible spending account. So that would allow somebody to flex the full out-of-pocket maximum if they would feel the, the desire to do so in the new plan year, so they'd have that option. This change brings the cost up. From the original recommendation was $3.5 million. This would bring it up to $3.9 million for the medical plan. Are there any questions?
What do you mean by...
I'm sharing. Are there any questions? Brenda?
What do you mean by brings the cost up?
With the original recommendation, that would be $3.5 million if we kept the $2,000, $4,000. But changing it to $1,350 to $2,700 brings that to $3.9 million.
So you're talking about the five million? We had five million to start with, we were going to bring that deficit down to $3,500, now it brings it to $3.9 million.
Correct.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Ed?
Just some clarification, looking at the budget forecast and thinking in terms of worst-case scenario. Projected four to six million dollar deficit for the next two years. Is that each of the next two years, or is that combined? Please.
It does say in the memo...
Can he be given the microphone? Jennifer, can you cast the microphone over?
In the memo, a four to six million dollar deficit for the next two years.
So that would be each of the next two years, or?
Each of the next two years.
Okay, so for the 1920 school year, worst-case scenario is a budget deficit of four to six million dollars?
That's the forecast, you said the worst-case scenario, but it's the forecast.
Okay, forecast. And does that include the, the, the five million dollar medical plan cost, or not?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
Okay.
Other questions? So, go ahead.
So with the, the change from 3.5 to 3.9, what does that change for the district?
Well, as Jennifer said, it goes from 3.5 million dollar increase to a 3.9 million dollar increase.
It increases the deficit that we, we were going to...
Right.
Yeah, so it, we have a 3.9 million dollar deficit instead of a 3.5 million dollar deficit for our health insurance, right?
Correct, but it's, it is baked into the number that Ed just referenced. Correct, so...
So it just makes that number...
It's a $400,000 change.
$400,000 more, right.
Other questions? So the, the thing that I wanted to talk about tonight, which there's no secret that I wanted to talk about this tonight, because it hasn't been a secret since I helped work out the deal of the prescription drugs before I got back on the board, is what is the average out-of-pocket impact on our families? And I know we can't answer that question tonight, because I was supposed to have a call with an actuary from our insurance consultant today. call with an actuary from our insurance consultant today, and that didn't happen. Well, the call happened. An hour of my day was lost to that, an hour of John's day was lost to that, an hour of Jennifer's day was lost to that, and we don't have our answer, and I'm supposed to vote on this, we're all supposed to vote on this next week. And for six years, it's been crystal clear that whenever this day came, I was gonna ask this question. I'm not mad at anyone at this table. But I expect better than my time to be wasted, and I especially, and I'm just a, I'm just a civilian elected official, this is a, this was a, this is my second thing, I have a full-time job. It wasted our staff's time, and it better never happen again. I, I think we might need to talk about a date in case we're not ready to vote next week.
Um, so I'm trying to read between all those lines, because I don't totally understand what you're saying right now. So could you explain?
Yep, so I was supposed to have a call with M3's actuary to ask some of these questions with a little bit more technical detail, and I was, instead, we were presented with a call that did not include the actuary, and so the questions couldn't be answered.
Okay, so, because I think transparency matters a whole lot with this conversation. Um, so what was it, what was the reason, I'm assuming, 'cause I'm feeling you right now, I'm assuming that you were probably as angry as you are now then, did you ask why this didn't happen?
Well, I asked if it was known that the, I mean, certainly, of course, if there's, yes, emergencies happen or whatever, that was not the case, the person was out of the office, they knew the person was gonna be out of the office when they, when they did this. So.
Okay.
Uh, if some, of course, of course, I wouldn't be this upset if, you know, I got a call even minutes before, you know, "Oh, hey, so-and-so, look, their kid's sick, can we do this?" Of course, that's, that's life. But scheduling, scheduling an appointment with a board member and with high-level executive staff of the district, and then having the same people there who, um, are not the technical people to answer certain questions that were there at the very first one of these, and now we have to vote on it next week, that's the, the problem.
Okay, but, so you're looking for a number?
I'm looking, yeah, so, yeah, right, so, yes.
Okay, so this number can only be communicated over the telephone?
Well, there's a lot of, there's probably some back-and-forth technical questions that I, I guess I, that's, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty deep in the weeds, but I don't, I don't know what, I, I'm left wondering if the, the way that they convert between, so every one of the different plans we got, there was an individual amount calculated, right, for an average out-of-pocket, we all got that, it was, right now it's 567, and if we did this or that, it would be, um, you know, the individual would go up by this much, and the full family amount, I'll just use those two for, to keep it simple, the full family amount was just calculated as always being 2.6 times the individual employee amount, which is probably not correct, because as you do different things, different interplay between the variables, and so my problem is, I can't vote yes, uh, you know, I have a certain place where I may be reluctantly but okay with going if I know that the average family's gonna pay more out-of-pocket, but I know what we're likely to budget for raises and that people won't be worse off. Um, I don't, I, I, I don't know if that's right, and if, uh, if an actuary tells me, "No, really, Andrew, the answer is always multiply the single by 2.6," which I don't think so, but I will, I will say I was, I was wrong, and it's 2.6 all the time, I'll, I'll admit it, I'll say it loud, say it proud. Um, I've had to do that a, like, like, four times or so, so, um, but I don't think, I will this time. Brenda?
Okay, so I just want to understand, so you're looking for information, and you're not the only one, by the way, this is not on you, just so I'm clear on that right now.
Well, I was, I mean, right, I, I know others, we've talked about it, others have wanted this, I figured.
Right.
I was probably best, um, you know, I probably have the most technical knowledge to have the back-and-forth with the professional person, and then they're not there.
Okay, so just, but so I'm clear?
Yeah.
So you, you arranged for information to be delivered, it wasn't delivered, can it not be delivered before, 'cause today's Monday?
Oh, it probably will be, oh, yeah, it'll probably be delivered on, I'll probably have the, so I'll have that phone call on Wednesday.
But you wanted to have the conversation tonight based on?
Well, now, right, we've lost one of the opportunities to say, you know what, the average family, when we go to this $1,350, it's obviously better than the $1,500, $3,000, but the average family is still paying 300 bucks more out-of-pocket than today, how do we feel about that, and this many max out? Now, with the vote being next week, right now, now we're getting really compressed, and, you know, and we, we, we pay, you know, and we deserve, we deserve better, and our staff deserves better than that, I'm not.
And, and just, again, to reiterate, why wasn't that information given?
Because the actuary wasn't there on the call.
And why wasn't the actuary there on the call?
Uh, 'cause I believe, I believe be, well, I want to disparage someone if I'm wrong, but I, I believe the person was not in the office today, and that was known that they were not going to be in the office today.
And there's nobody else there that can share that?
Um, not that can ha, I think, I think only an actuary is equipped to have a, a back-and-forth technical conversation, just as we would defer certain other topics if the expert staff member wasn't here.
Okay, so I think it's important to note that, um, that's a really important number that is not listed in what, everything that's come before us. Um, I think that's a number that, if somebody asks me, "Do you know how much that increased my, you know, what I was spending every year?" If I don't actually have that answer, I don't think ethically I can vote on this, so I don't know what this means for us for the, the time.
Well, it was listed, but I don't know if it's right, or if the oversimplified model is too much oversimplified. Brenda?
Michelle, I'll hear that first.
Um, first of all, it, it was very unfortunate that the actuary wasn't on the line, and I'm not sure why, and we need to find out why that, we were not apprised of that, so, and I've apologized to you, and, and I came on the line as well later, but didn't recognize it.
But there's nothing for you to apologize for, 'cause you didn't do it, you joined the call expecting an actuary to.
But I, but I would offer this, I, I think one of the things that, that we have to be mindful of is that we want to make sure that the data are where it's supposed to be, and that you have a shared understanding of what you're looking for. I think it's a very fair question, I don't think any of us disagree with that. It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, that, um, we will have an actuary that Mr. Becker can speak to?
Yes, he will be back in the office Wednesday, so, um, I believe that two different days with blocks of time on both Wednesday and Thursday are offered, to see if, if Mr. Becker's available.
Yeah, but I will, I will, I will contact management of, of M3 to ensure that that's scheduled, yeah.
Um, are they aware of, sorry, go ahead.
Um, I'm just wondering, because there's a possibility, I'm hearing in some of what you say, that you might hear, um, what you need, you know, the information that you're asking for from the actuary, and it's possible that you might be ready to vote on Monday, and it's also possible that you might not. So I'm just wondering if we can look at our calendars and pick a temporary, you know, hold a date on our calendars and decide next week if we need it. If we're not ready to vote, then we, then we, um, we have that other date on our calendar. Does that sound?
I think it's good for this or any reason, maybe, maybe we get the exact correct answer for, best, best actuarial answer, and have something else we are not concerned about, I think a backup date is, I think it's more likely than not that we'll probably be able to vote next week, but I think a backup date is a, a good idea.
Because whatever date, yeah, so whatever date we have will be two weeks later, 'cause we have spring break, um, in between, so if we look at the 25th of March, which is a Monday, um, that's probably, I would think, we'd want to have at least a week between our board meeting and our, and another board meeting, so, and I think we're looking at the 25th then.
Just thinking about some of the work that we also have going on behind the scenes related to staffing, and I'm frustrated having heard what you've had, had to say, Andrew, that, that, uh, they didn't have somebody there, uh, but thinking about the staffing work and the budget work that we're doing, that the, the longer we delay on knowing whether or not this is a factor, um, we, we have to plan for, we have to plan for those other efficiency seeking's or reductions or cost, cost savings measures that, that, uh, that, that will be in play, and it does, it does impact our staffing, uh, conversations. We, we, of course, want to make sure that we have highly skilled, abundant resources in the classroom, and we have to, we have to think about purchases such as the purchases that, that were approved tonight related to curriculum cycle and things of that nature. Completely understand that without full information, it's very challenging to make a decision like that, and that I, I, I feel that frustration, uh, just putting that piece out there, that if we wait multiple weeks, it could become more challenging for people to know where we're at from, uh, approval of, of, approval of staffing and approval of, uh, our, our additional work on budgets.
Right.
Are you saying the 25th is too late?
It, it could be.
It's impactful.
It is very impactful.
Well, can we, I mean, is three days enough time to change, I mean, it's just hard to predict, 'cause we don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to, I, I think it's probably more likely after tonight that I won't have a meeting scheduled by the consultants again without the actuary there. I would say that chances of that have gone way down in the last 15 minutes, but, um...
Well, do you want to look at the 12th, 13th, or 14th, so that we still reserve the right to discuss it more on the 11th, and we can still make a decision?
There's a candidate for him on the 13th.
13th, okay, what about the 12th?
That's just one day.
But if we have the 11th to discuss it?
I mean, I guess, if we're ready to vote on the 12th, then we might as well just finish the discussion and vote on the 11th, I would think.
Okay, otherwise the 14th?
I, I, I guess, I mean, I, you know, it doesn't mean...
'Cause the following week is spring break, so.
Well, the...
We...
Well, actually, I, you know, if, my, my thought would be that the, the 25th would be an unfortunate last resort if we're, if we still don't have the information that we need. I'm hoping not to use, I don't think it's likely we would need to use it, but it's a, it's a big decision.
It is.
It is.
Um...
I don't know.
Linda?
Okay, so, so we need this information. Um, I'll be honest, I'll abstain without it. I won't vote on this without that, but is, does this person, are we flying this person in? Like, why, I don't understand why it's hard to...
No, just for, just for...
Right, but I mean, so can, do they know, are they aware that this information is pretty critical to our?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
The person's back in the office Wednesday, and they have a close text for Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay, so it's more than likely that we'll have it?
Right.
Yeah, I don't know what else, but I don't know what else, what other questions there will be. I mean, I'm not, I'm not pretending that my question is the, I think it's a very important question to have front and center, but it's not the only important factor.
No, it's not, but it is. Um, it's definitely up there.
I think, um, what we should probably do, not knowing where things are at, and maybe, maybe after the meeting on Wednesday, Andrew, you'll have a better sense anyway before you have the discussion, but I do think we probably need to look for that, where we're gonna go.
Fine.
And we have, but keep looking, because it's, um, a, a 1.2 to 1.5 million more that we'll need to find, so.
Well, I don't, we're, um...
Wait, we just need to do that.
I, I think it's, I think it's like, you know, do I, do I think it's likely that in a week's time I will be ready to make an informed vote? Yeah, I, I think it's likely, but I'm not going to say that for anyone else.
Okay.
Yep, and that makes sense.
Thank you. I, I have a couple other questions that aren't exactly about the plan costs, but, um, John, could you just clarify, when you talk about the, the worst, like, when you talk about this four to six million, the wor, the worst, what, what are we looking at for the worst-case scenario as far as lost enrollment and what the state would do? Like, what, what gets us to the, the six?
Sure, and, uh, in the forecast model, um, there are a number of factors, and I've tried to share them with any board members, and I welcome, you know, you to stop it if, if you want to go through the detailed forecast. We all know the governor presented, uh, his first run of the budget, and we've already been looking through summaries, and I think it's safe to say that, uh, both houses are looking at half as much, uh, financial assistance than the governor, so the governor's budget was very, uh, pro-education, and there are a number of moving parts there, with the revenue limit, with equalized aid, with per pupil adjustments, special ed, aid, uh, some shifting and moving to the fair funding formula. So, you know, over a year and a half ago when we began, it's just not me, it's many people on our team that look at, uh, our forecasting model. At this point, our enrollment, I have as a flat projection, property value's at 2%, salaries at 3.5%, health insurance at 10%. Those are some key metrics for each of you to know what the forecast is based off of, and there has been, you know, we've answered numerous questions relating to the budget and the forecast model. The 1920 budget is not finalized, as John just mentioned. Our next step is right-sizing our staff. Right-sizing meaning they go through elementary through 12th grade, and our classroom sizes, and March 25th, we'll come together looking at what FTEs, uh, we have scheduled for. So Andrew, when you ask about specifics, I'd be happy to walk you through it. Um, I believe equalized aid with a 5 million increase, uh, per pupil with a 1.5, with our property value, with our enrollment, and of course, the final piece being the state budget yet to be determined, that we believe cumulatively, with revenues and expenses, we're looking at around $5 million. Now, many people have asked, "What if it comes in better?" Well, we do have year two to be concerned with, no question about that, um, but what I don't want to sit here and face is, "What if it comes in worse?" And we don't know about it until the fall. That cannot happen for us, and we are, we are projecting what we know. There are a lot of materials, though, from Madison that we're reviewing, to see what impact, uh, we have for our schools, so I, I hope that's an overall summary, um, of where we're at today.
Brenda?
Okay, so, something that just keeps coming back to me is, how long did we know about this before we were asked to vote on specific curriculum, a new charter school that's gonna cost us exactly the amount that, um, Dr. Lanefield just mentioned at the board table? How long did we know about this? Because I feel like we're extremely reactive to all the numbers you just listed, and no matter how much we wallpaper around this, we're still going to the people who are the closest to our students to make up this deficit. It doesn't matter however you want to phrase it, if you throw $100 this way, or $50 this way, or... It doesn't matter however you want to phrase it, if you throw a hundred dollars this way, or fifty dollars this way, or we are still going to those people to balance the budget. And me personally, I feel like it doesn't matter. You know, if you tell, if you tell people out there that things are rising, you know, everything's rising, but guess what else is rising in their lives? Their heat bills, their water bills, their childcare expenses, everything is going up, so. Uh, if I, if it was me, I would wonder, well, is this gonna happen again? So it only went up a little bit this year, now it's going up again this year, because we can't guarantee that this won't happen again, but I really need somebody to guarantee me that we're not gonna go back to the people closest to our students to make up the deficit. I can't get over that. I just cannot get over that. And I hear this, I read this, it looks better, but you're still taking money out of the pockets of the people closest to our students. Who haven't really, if you go back and you look at Act Ten, if you go through the history, you don't see a lot of pay raises in general. You see reductions, you see, you know, a lot of years where nothing happened. And I believe, what I'm, what I'm hearing a lot about is, I got a pay raise, but guess what? I mean, I really didn't, if, if this goes through for some families. So I know, it feels very, it's a lot of numbers and I, and I understand that, but at the end of the day, we have to understand that if we're not investing in our priorities, that's a problem, because priorities should actually be something you don't, you don't make cuts to, you invest in those. And I do not see how, again, I'm gonna keep saying it, the people closest to our students are not a priority. And why they're actually the go-to to, to make up the budget deficit. Um, I'm just being really honest with this. I feel like this was exactly what Scott Walker envisioned when he got all of that going. And it's ironic, because I actually marched in Madison thinking about all this, and now here I am, sitting here, actually making the decision to do something. I marched with, actually had pneumonia when I marched, um, that's not really that important, but I actually did that, and.
Other, um, questions? Michelle?
I just have a comment, I, I, I want to make sure that, um, our employees are also aware of the advocacy that others have engaged in over these years. To your point, Rhonda, it has been, when I joined the district in two thousand and eleven and we looked at what happened after Act Ten, we began in a nine million dollar deficit position, unlike other places that we're able to recover, we never really did. And if you look at state funding over time, it has been less than ideal. I have, I have testified at multiple meetings and legislative hearings and talked about our story. And the opportunity to be in worse state, I would say, and, and I know that Dr. Warren, Mike Bledka, um, and others, um, stood at Mr. Dorf. I recall all these different opportunities to advocate on behalf of the children and families we serve. The reality is, and that's what you see in Governor Evers' proposed budget, as well as the budget, um, through the, or the recommendations through the Blue Ribbon Commission, is that the reality is, the needs of our children who come to us are different than they have been in the past and continue to change. And that the supports that are needed to ensure that the equitable playing field continue to be needed and addressed. And I just recently had the opportunity to, um, talk to the federal government, um, the Education Department with the reauthorization of ESSA. It was last Friday, I had a, a conversation with the person under Betsy DeVos to talk about funding, to talk about equity, to talk about the reality that we are currently facing, and not only myself, but other, 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 this, this entire community, and also communities around our country who are serving children and don't have the resources to do that. I think that's the opportunity that we can need to continue to tell that story in an advocacy position, and we have been doing so. Um, I know that our, our, uh, local unions across the state, and I know I'm looking at Justin, or, uh, out there, he has stood as well doing testifying. We need to continue to tell the story. And so the reality is, we continue to try to remain, um, vibrant in the economic times and in the marketplace that we're currently in, because we're in a very, very competitive market. And, um, at the same time, we are facing, um, declining enrollment, which is one of our realities that we have to address. We are facing, um, opportunities like never before with children who we want to serve. And they come to us with, with different languages, and we have that responsibility, and we embrace that, and we do a great job if we have the tools and resource. So it's a constant balancing act, and I think that the piece around it is, at the end of the day, I care deeply about the staff. I believe everybody at this table does as well. And we may not be able to address every need, um, but we certainly are trying to balance it, because the twenty-one thousand children that we are fortunate to serve each and every day that come through our doors are deserving of the very best. And we feel confident in the staff that we have, and we will continue to work and communicate um, and meet with, um, leadership from, from our staff as well. We care, we care a lot, and, and this is a rough, um, time for us, and I believe it will get better.
Okay, and I, I agree with what you're saying, but I will say. None of that doesn't take away the fact that we have employees that will have to pay more for something that really should be an incentive for them to stay in our district. They will still have to pay more, they will be taking money out of their pockets. They will be doing that, they don't, and these are people that don't, I mean, because me personally, all of that, it sounds good and it, and it makes sense, but the reality is, I have to look at what our priorities are. I believe that when you look at a, a household budget, a business budget, when you look at a school board budget, I mean, we have a two hundred and seventy-four million dollar budget, which is entirely different than my household, my business, but every time you look at a budget, you take and you formulate priorities, and you're looking at that, and you're asking to list that. And you get those out in front right away, what are the things that matter to me that I actually need in order to have a copacetic experience, environment? Um, you know, we can't say we want a thriving workforce and we don't actually invest in them. We shouldn't be cutting them, we should, cutting with them, we should be investing. We should not be taking from them, we should be giving more to them, if anything. So again, yeah, the, there has been reduction in, in spending and, 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 or in cut, in funding. But the budget here has grown as well, and I think we all know that. So you can't say in one lane that it sucks that we haven't had all this funding. But there have been significant increases in this, in this district, there have been. And so, but has it gone to salaries and benefits for teachers? No, it hasn't, it really hasn't. And moving to next year and the year after that, um, because I have at least two more years on this board, I'm gonna have to probably go through this conversation again. But in the meantime, I'm gonna wonder if we looked at inefficiencies in the district, or did we not? Because right now, when you look at priorities and you ask, ask to take, to, to make up the budget deficit, you're looking at the people that are with our students more than anyone else in this room as the people doing that. Is that, are we okay with that? Is this something that we're just gonna do, um, or expect to do? Because I know we're making up, we're thinking about taking some steps, but, you know, a million and a half dollars. I can tell you something though, I would never have voted for that charter school contract if I would have known that I was gonna have to go into the pockets of teachers and support staff, I would never have done that, and I'm, I'm angry about this.
Uh, Brenda?
So I think, um, we have potentially up to a six million dollar deficit, and we're recouping, what's the number? One point, one point one million of that. So we're still looking at a four point nine million dollar deficit, which is where looking at those efficiencies will, will happen. Um, and that's a lot of money to cut, and it's gonna take, you know, there's gonna be a lot of, of things that we look at. And, you know, the challenge in a district like ours, when the majority of our, our, um, um, the majority of our costs are people. And so anytime we look at cutting, you know, it's, it starts to be that we start cutting people. So to me, I look at it as a balance of, we're, we're recouping one point one million dollars of a five million dollar health, um, insurance cost increase. And of which we don't know far ahead, because our health insurance is directly related to how it's used during the year. So we have no way of knowing until we get toward the end of the school year what the usage has been in our health insurance and what those costs have been, and what the prediction is for the next, the next year coming up, based upon the use of, of, of health insurance, um, the previous year. So I look at as, I mean, I, I too, I mean, I don't, no one around this table wants to cut, um, or to, you know, raise health insurance costs. But to me, it's a balance of, of being able to, to, um, to continue with the staff that we have. Um, and not have to cut staff in order to pull up the extra one point two million dollars. Um, I feel like we've come to a, a better place in terms of, you know, the, the compromise with, with what those costs are going to be. Um, but it's, but there's still a lot of cuts that are gonna have to be made, um, at the tune of almost five million dollars. You know, depending on whether the forecasts are accurate or not, but it, you know, it sounds like you're forecasting pretty, um, reasonably, you know, conservatively, but not, not super conservatively, I mean, you are, you are providing, um, the fact that, that we are expecting some increase in our funding. Um, so actually, so I look at it more as a, as that kind of a balance of, of, um, having, helping people keep jobs and, and, you know, and, uh, having a health insurance plan moving forward that's gonna save us money this year, it's gonna save us money next year and many years to come because of how we've restructured the, the health insurance plan. Part of restructuring it allows us to, to, um, to have savings moving forward. If, um, all we did was raise the, the, uh, premiums, then next year we'd have to raise premiums based on whatever the cost of health insurance. Am I speaking correctly? Okay. Based on the, you know, next year's cost. So, so with, with this restructuring that we've done, it's going to be something that we, that we save, um, year after year.
Uh, Christina?
So I want to say thanks to John, 'cause he, we met, uh, last week, gosh, that feels like two weeks ago. Uh, and it, it was great for you to be able to go over this in detail with me. Um, but given that I was appointed in August and served, serving in September, I don't have the historical knowledge of the budget. So in your year over your forecast, John, or this is a board question, whoever can answer it. I mean, at what point, when did you, when did we know that this was happening, or this was going to happen? Did you forecast, or did you forecast that out last year?
I believe we met and had, uh, a board retreat on January twenty eighth of twenty eighteen.
Okay.
And it was shortly after, you know, the first budget that I had gone through here and I provided an assessment of where we would be. And, you know, at that time, uh, the projections probably, well, they're not as tight as they are now. Uh, there are more knowns than unknowns. However, in the first year of a biennial with the new governor, um, it is challenging. But last year at this time, you know, I, actually fourteen months ago, I, I did share, uh, an estimate of where we were, and I can remember back and forth with some of you about, you know, the variables that were, were listed, if it was enrollment and the things I mentioned earlier. So you could easily predict it, not easily, but you could predict it, uh, once that last biennium was completed. And really, it's completed in November when you certify. So this year, this budget won't be finalized at the state level. You know, maybe it's by June thirtieth, you know, it's very optimistic, but realistically, it could go into the fall. You'll then know at that point where we're at for the next couple of years. You, you can project, even with wages, you know, you're gonna put something in for health insurance, but those are your two biggest drivers. So it's fairly common to be able to, to get, get you those numbers at that time.
So would you say in that meeting on January twenty eighth, two thousand and eighteen, you were pr- how, fairly accurate to where we are sitting right now?
Yeah.
Okay, so the question to the board is, what have we been doing and everybody in this room to prepare for this? And I mean that as a really honest question, because I came on in September, so I really am just asking honestly, like, what have we been doing? Because if we've known for fourteen months and now we're sitting here, what work has been done to prepare us for this?
Brenda?
I think we've cut money from our budget every single year since Act Ten. Has there been a year we haven't cut? I don't think so.
So we cut over the, okay.
So we've, for, since Act Ten, we've been cutting every year. Heck, the first year was the worst, because we had whatever, nine, twelve million dollar deficit, um, that year. But, um, so it's something that, that we're, is an ongoing process.
Sure, yeah, I understand that.
Every year, we look at efficiencies, we look at priorities, we look at, you know, needs of students, um, uh, uh, programmatic needs. Um, you know, looking for, for ways to, to, uh, make sure we have what we need, but, you know, we've, we're, so we're, so it's not like this is the first time we've ever had to cut from the budget.
Yeah, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is if we're looking to make efficiency, have a fit, and looking at efficiencies, and we've talked about this, you brought it up again, I talked about this last week, or two weeks ago, whatever. Time is, I'm living in a time warp. What have we specifically then done? What, I, I would just, I don't know, I mean, I, I guess I just feel like I just wonder if we've done enough prep work to get us, and I, and that's on a value statement, I'm just thinking and being honest.
Michelle?
Question, um, so we're looking at five million in healthcare, and I've been monitoring M three for several years. And last year, I didn't see the concerns that I see this year, and I don't know when I brought that forward and said, this is a concern because the spending is far higher than what's predicted, or the projected versus. So the, the question that I have is that for several years, we, it, it performed well. Would you say that's accurate?
Say we performed where it was forecasted?
The, the insurance, the insurance performed where it was forecasted. What I saw this year, I found very troubling, which was new. This was not something that I had experienced, um, in the past in terms of.
You, you're, I'm assuming you're speaking to the, the loss ratio specifically?
Correct.
The, the plan performance monitors.
Especially with our active employees. And that, that was a piece that, that.
We had some, some abnormalities, we, we had some high expenses at the very beginning of the year, actually, end of last year, that carried into this year. It's coming back in, in line. We also have to keep in mind that about two percent of that is probably, um, self-induced, where the recommendation was, I believe, a seven point six five percent increase last year, and we went with a five percent. And, and took that on as a district expense, so, uh, so I, I expect the number to be a little bit higher than a, a straight on hundred percent. But the number's coming back down, it, it's always a, a year, year-long number, so there, it ebbs and flows throughout, the, the goal is at the end. And it's, it is moving back down toward that hundred percent.
Laura?
Um, I've had a number of people ask me about rough, the referendum dollars. Um, John, can you just talk a little bit about how that has impacted our budget? John, can you just talk a little bit about how that has impacted our budget, short term and long term?
Sure, and there were some questions that I noticed about the referendum dollars. It was a sixteen point five million dollar operational for ten years. And the sixteen point five million is included in the budget. So think of it this way, if those dollars were not here, you know, you're talking about in excess of a twenty million dollar deficit. So that was a critical point when the voters approved that. And honestly, over the course of a decade, you know, the value of sixteen point five million dollars decreases, and it's included in all the numbers we're talking about. So it's baked in, if you will.
I think some of the work that we were prepared to do related to staffing and other budget pieces, if the referendum hadn't passed, we were looking at having to cut, you know, potentially over a hundred positions, and looking at, you know, reducing most of our budgets down to almost nothing. So really, having that baked in was something that avoided that huge reduction at the time. But even in that first year that we got the, that we got the referendum money, we still had to have a budget, we still had to reduce budgets to make sure that we were, that we were still within that range. And when we think about some of the things that we're doing, and that the board can take action on, thinking about some of our facilities, boundary study was work, and things that we can do related to consolidation and efficiency-seeking within some of our programming. Just as a, for instance, we are collapsing one of our bilingual contracts from one school into another. It will actually allow us to have more highly qualified teachers in front of the kids, and have a savings of, you know, those positions. Another piece that comes to mind, just based on tonight's spending, we spent about a hundred thousand dollars in curriculum. That is actually things that we were looking at buying next year, but we're actually able to take out of this year's budget, so that we can use it as professional learning in the summer and still have it count as this year's budget. But allows us to, rather than kick that can down the road and not buy something that somebody needs, it allows us to buy it ahead of time. And I know that doesn't completely make sense, but because of the way budgets work, and we don't have like money that you can save from one year to the next for expenditures, but it allows us to spend on something that we will then not have to spend on next year.
I agree. We need highly qualified teachers, highly qualified librarians, janitors, care professionals, clerical staff, nurses, social workers, counselors, all of these people that are essentially the bones of the school district. How do we, I feel like it's, we're saying things, and we really feel like we mean them, but then we turn around and make decisions that don't actually add up to being able to do those things. So we have, we want to attract and retain highly qualified teachers, but we're willing to go into their pocketbooks. I don't see how that actually works at all, I really don't. So it's still confusing to me, no matter how we talk around it. And actually, to that point, if this doesn't pass, and I'd like to know this honestly, because I've heard this, heard rumors of this, but it's not been told to me, and I'd like it to be told to me, because I'd like to know what's actually on the table when I make this vote. Are we going to reduce staff if this doesn't go through? And what staff are we reducing? Because if you're actually talking about it, right? If you're actually mentioning it and throwing it out there as leverage for people to vote, you must have it somewhere stated, it must have been discussed. It has not been discussed at this board table until, it's the first time I heard it tonight. And is that true? And if that is true, I personally want to know what that looks like. Because if something happens where it doesn't pass, and I don't vote for this, and then we cut librarians, paraprofessionals, nurses, social workers, any of those people, then I'd personally like to know if that's actually happening.
Can you just clarify, sorry, I just wanted to clarify, 'cause I wanna make sure I'm understanding. Can you clarify what you mean when you say, where, if this vote doesn't pass, what have you heard specifically about staffing?
I have been told, that it has been told to teachers that if this doesn't go through, then they're gonna cut staff. I've not heard that. And so I'm not, I'm not even entertaining, that's not even part of my vote at this point, but if that actually is true, I would love to know that.
Generally, when we cut, when we cut staff, we've always done it through attrition. So we have, every year, we have a certain number of staff members who retire. And we don't, we have not cut staff to the point where we've had to lay off people. I don't know if, you know, I don't, you guys are still working, from what I understand, on, you know, on looking at efficiencies in terms of staffing. That's usually where we look, is efficiencies. We're a big district, we evaluate, not we, but the administrative staff sits down and evaluates all of the positions, and decides where can we create efficiencies in our system, so that we can make cuts that don't, that don't impact our programs and what we do for kids and things like that. So it's, it's not, it's not a random process as to who, you know, as to what positions are cut. It's a very thought, well-thought-out process of, you know, and every year, our students are changing, the needs are changing, the, you know, the makeup of schools change, and so it's, and so that's the process that's used, from what I understand, for doing that. And it's, you know, and it's all levels of the district. It's not one particular group of employees. It's looking at, you know, all levels of the district, from administrators to our clerical and parists and things like that. I don't, I don't think you're done to be able to tell us what, no. I mean, it's a, it's an ongoing process of figuring that out. It has to be done by the end of April, because that's when we issue contracts. And once we issue contracts, then if we, that's why we have to project so carefully, because once we issue contracts, then they have a contract. And so if we have overestimated the staff that we need, and we get a lot less money, we're still paying that money for those staff.
But can I just ask though, and I'm hearing you, but what are the odds of us actually cutting teachers and support staff in the classroom? Is that really where we'd go?
I said it would, I mean, we look at all levels.
No, actually, I'd like to hear that as a definitive answer, actually.
Go ahead. I don't know the details of what you've been talking about.
Yes, we'll be cutting in all areas, we'll have to find certain, certain things to reduce. I think the, I don't wanna characterize that we're not putting resources towards students and student need. I think if John, as our budget person, has seen that in every, every week when we have staffing, we're actually, it's something that we're actually, we've been adding staff and adding staff, because we see the needs there, and we have compassion, and we're trying to solve the situations related to need for resource. And quite often, it's, it's actually meant that we've increased our staff. We've increased our staff by about six million dollars in the past couple of years.
Just in special ed?
Just in special ed. So thinking about the special education needs. So thinking about the bigger issue of state funding and how that plays into things, we're not, we're not compensated for the needs of our EL students or our special needs students. And so those are two critical areas. Thinking about elementary right now, we have three hundred and fifty, forecast of three hundred and fifty fewer students coming into elementary, and because of, they're just not there. It's not that they're open and rolling out, it's that they're just, the population is smaller for next year's kindergarten coming in. With three hundred and fifty fewer students, if you assign that to twenty-five per teacher, that would be fourteen positions. We're not even looking at reducing by that fourteen positions. It would be a right sizing of less than that fourteen at elementary. And we also know that because of sometimes the transancy and the moving and instability of student populations in some of our schools, we wanna make sure that they are able to keep really highly qualified, engaged teachers there, rather than, okay, now we're gonna cut this kindergarten teacher, and then in August, actually, we have to add another one anyway. So we're trying to do the best we can of forecasting what the need is. We will definitely be reducing more from administration and central office administration, as well as curriculum purchases and all those other areas. We, when we, when we have our prioritized list of what is impacted, we look first, the first criteria is impact on students, because we, we don't want to do that. It's against our nature as people who are educators trying to serve kids. And there's the reality of the budget being tight. And when we have a five million dollar increase in insurance, we look at, you said prioritize, and our priority is to care for those educators. And so we're blocking eighty percent of that additional insurance cost, trying to find something that's, that's an in-between compromise, and it's something that we've worked with the association on, to try and find something that is, it's not something that we want to do to increase, increase the cost to our employees related to those benefits. And at the same time, we know that there are those needs there. So where do we find those efficiencies? It can be a challenge, and we are doing our best, and we're doing it very collaboratively. We're doing it with a great deal of conversation with our principals, conversation with the association. And the association is looking, they have argued with us about certain things, and they have pushed certain points, trying to advocate strongly for their membership. And so those are, those are the factors that go into the decision-making. And it, and I speak, I'm speaking about it partly because with a number of the different areas, the supervision of schools and supervision of curriculum and learning, a pretty large portion of the budget falls under my area. And I'm trying to make sure that we are making very hard choices in a way that has least impact on kids. And I know that that, that passing on twenty percent of the five million dollar increase in insurance is hard. It is, it is a hard thing to do. But when I look at the impact of where it's gonna hit in other areas, we have to have every, every element take a little bite. But first prioritizing on what we can do to support kids.
Ed?
Just a couple of things to, I guess, clarification. I don't know, within the, within the budget, if there's five or six million dollars worth of attrition, I should say, within the budget, within the staffing, if there's five to six million dollars worth of attrition in there. The other thing that is, that needs to be pointed out too, though, is when you talk about three hundred and fifty fewer students at elementary school, you're talking about kids who are spread between six levels, four K through fifth grade, and across, what, thirty-five buildings?
Yes.
So it doesn't come out cleanly, that that's fourteen teachers. And, you know, we've been down that road plenty of times, and obviously, it's gotta come from somewhere. It's not an easy task.
No.
You know, would hope we've never come to where we're doing, even preliminary notices of layoffs. We've been down that road in the past, and it's very, very hurtful, and very hard on morale. But I just wanted to clarify that one point about the three hundred and fifty students.
Sure.
And that, that doesn't automatically mean fourteen fewer staff.
It's definitely not an equal equation. And we're trying to find a way to, find a way that we're still working within our board policies and our board guidance on staff size ratios, and considering the special needs of many of our students, whether they're EL or special ed.
Yeah, and nevertheless, it still is three hundred and fifty fewer per pupil.
Correct, correct.
Love is that we have.
Well, it's about six million a year.
Right.
Anything else?
Yeah, actually, so, might as well give that up. So enrollment's obviously a hot topic. So what are we doing to make sure? I mean, you say that those kids aren't here, but the reality is, we do have people leaving, and their money goes, I know you said their money doesn't all go with them, but there is some money that goes with them. We do have people that are choosing to leave the district for customer service, communication issues. So to sit here and pretend that that's not happening, it is happening. So it's not all just that these people are disappearing, they're not there. It's, the fact is that they actually are choosing to leave, so.
Not the three hundred that we're losing.
Okay. Well, we could be making up with some of those, with people who wanna stay here. Can we agree on that?
Yeah.
Every student, yeah?
Yeah.
Great. So you have conversations again about removing, taking, and balancing budgets, but we're not having a lot of conversations about the enrollment part of it. I know we have a survey out there that we're hoping that more than fifty percent of people respond to. But it's, it's just really hard to swallow. By the way, I did not vote, just so everyone remembers, I did not vote for the budget before, in case anybody was wondering that. That is part of that as well. So I have had concerns for a long time in general about priorities, and I continue to, and especially after going through this proposal and having to consider voting on this. But as a board member, I would like to think that if this doesn't go through, that we would not cut from the classroom. So I'm gonna actually try to narrow it down. So we're talking about cutting staff, but let's talk about from the classroom.
I think John already explained that, when he said that they look at the things that are not directly impacting students in the classroom. They're looking at things outside of that, and in terms of what they look for, for cutting.
But I'm talking about, he's talking about past tense, I'm talking about future tense.
No, he's talking, he's talking about future tense.
Well, I'm talking about if this doesn't go through, and I'm talking about what we would be willing to commit to that we wouldn't do.
I don't think, I don't think you, I don't think that, well, I don't think that we're likely to find that here. I suppose we could each say something, but here, I guess I'd like to.
What do you mean by that?
I don't think, I, there's too many, I mean, okay, personally, if this, first of all, I think, I think a compromise of some increase, but not as much as some of the earlier proposals, and I maybe, which may or may not be the current administrative proposal, that I don't know how I feel about that, because we don't have an actuarial, an actuarial estimate of it. So it's, it's possible, in fact, I think there's a, I think there's a good chance that our, the savings of doing this change are underestimated, or we could do less, less impact to the individuals and save the same amount of money. I think that's very possible, based on some things I was looking at, but only an actuary can say for sure. There's just so much here that I don't, I think would be very difficult to figure out. And I would like to know, I would like to have, take a serious look at potentially taking a stand and defying an unfunded mandate. Now, sometimes those come with any consequences if you do them, but maybe there's some that don't. I've asked about it before, I know the one classic example, I said, well, what if, what if we took a stand today and defied this mandate? Like, oh, well, you'd lose fifty million dollars. Okay, well, that's not the one we're gonna go after. But is there an unfunded mandate to defy? Is there, did we look at, you know, did we get all the right numbers on the insurance? Are there, are there additional things we could put into the insurance that would not cost people more, but would save more money? Which is what the independent actuarial review that's already approved is supposed to help find. that's already approved is supposed to help find? But we have to get the regular actuarial numbers right that we've already paid for first, before we can talk about extras. I think there's just so, there's many things outside of the box that could be looked at, too. I don't think we're gonna leave tonight with an answer of if you don't, because I don't even know what the, I think the number, I think the number of what insurance, what will be saved by doing an insurance change, I think that number will be different Monday than it was today.
But we're not discussing, or we, it's been mentioned, but we are absolutely not interested in using the overage of the fund balance. We would never do that.
I would not recommend it.
Not recommended, but I don't think devaluing your working force is either, so.
Well, that's, that's fair to say, but you asked me a question about the fund balance usage, and I have told each of you individually, I do not recommend it. We're too tight to the line of 15.7%.
So people listening understand that that's over, that's $2 million, right? Over $2 million?
1.6, but, okay.
The overage. But just so it's fair and people want to know about that, what that sounds like. And if we were to do that, what would happen?
You're building upon a source that you're gonna have to go to in the future. And I do not recommend that.
It's not sustainable, you're not doing it.
Absolutely.
You can't, and if you take, yeah. The expenditures will be there next year, and we'll have to come up with the money the following year. So we're just delaying, delaying what we have to, have to increase insurance by, by one year and putting ourselves in risk for our bond rating so that when we go out to do capital projects, we, the interest rate that we can get, or even the bond to begin with. If your bond rating drops enough, nobody wants to give you money, then we don't have the ability to borrow. So it's, we're already really tight.
But if your teachers are a revolving door as a result of this type of a proposal, I think that's something that you should be more concerned about sustainability-wise. I think that has bigger impacts.
Financially, that doesn't, that doesn't help us. I understand your point, but if you're pulling it from where the board has a 15% policy on and you're violating your own policy, and then you're building upon it from year to year, it's unsustainable. You asked for a recommendation on it, I just would not recommend it.
So even though there's an overage that wouldn't violate the board policy, it's still not recommended, even though it's over the recommended number?
I think if we were at 18, 19, 20%, and there are many districts that are far higher than 20, that would be a different conversation. But again, it wouldn't be sustainable at some point, and the board would have to make a decision at that.
And if the roof caved in on one of our schools, we would be below our fund balance, because that's where the money would come from to make that repair. That's why we have that fund balance, is for things that are totally unexpected that
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm really concerned about the roof caving in via morale with staff. And that's a real thing. And I've been told that by a ton of people. That's real, it's actually happening, it's not something that's probable, it's happening. And so I'm gonna just keep coming back to that. I would love this to actually be a conversation full with, with teachers, so they could be part of this. Because not every teacher is a member of the union. And I've heard from a lot of them.
Yes.
John, can you give us an example of just the practical effect of having our bond rate, rating go down?
Well, potentially, in interest rate charges, and I, I'm not gonna speculate on exact numbers, it depends on the issue and how much you're talking. But it certainly could be substantial for, for interest payments in the future.
Are we talking thousands, are we talking tens of thousands, are we talking millions that it could affect?
Depends on the size of the issue, and it will be proportional to that. If you do, you know, 50 million on up, it's gonna add up substantially. Depends on the size of the borrow.
John, can you speak to a timeline? Do you have any sense of when we would be able to have a conversation with our, with our associations regarding wages for the future? Wages and benefits?
Sure. A good question. As I stated earlier, we have a projection of 3.5% across the board.
3.5% CPI?
No, CPI was 2.44.
And the total?
The reason I have 3.5 in our forecast model is, a number of our employees have STEPS, which increase that wage, and 3.5 will protect all of our employees for that wage. And I've already done, of course, an analysis on what I think by group, if we're talking.
And what would that look like for teachers?
For teachers, for a starting salary, it's $1,000 approximately per cell, but in addition to a cell, they do move a step.
Okay.
So the step underneath that is $1,039. So you could essentially double that cell movement, and that would be the expectation for someone moving through the salary. Now, that's the low end.
That's the, about $2,000, then?
Sure, yes. In the, the upper end, you're talking about, now it moves up to about $1,600. So if they're able to move a step, it's double that quantity. If you're at the bottom of the salary schedule, there is no movement down below. That range is anywhere from $1,625 to $1,700. So those are, these are estimates we have.
So that would be the lowest amount?
Correct.
For a, for a teacher?
Correct.
Anything else? All right, we'll move that. Oh, are there any, any public comments on any of this?
I didn't have anybody that, or no one.
Okay. All right. We moved that to board reconvening closed session in room 337 pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985-1C. Do I have to read it all if we're only doing one of the three pieces? Jeff, do I have to read the whole thing if we're only considering one of the three pieces in closed session?
Recomunion in closed session.
Yeah, I would.
Okay. But then we're also allowed to talk both. Okay. 1985-1C, considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985-1F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary action data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where paragraph B applies, of which, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations, to which chief financial officer and chief human resources positions. And pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985-1C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, to which superintendent's performance evaluation, the board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session.
Sandy?
Aye.
I, Holm?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Eric, 7-0.
You know it's cold when the weather.